And visitors, I'd also like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones and other devices so that we may conduct the people's business without interruption. Commissioner Ray Mosley will give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Father. And Father, most of all, we thank you, Father, for bringing each person this in this room, Father, in this building, Father, here safely this morning, Father. Father, keeping all hurt, harmed, and danger away, Father. Father, we ask you this morning, Father, that you give us guidance, Father, as this Board of Commissioners, Father, make decisions, Father, that, Father, we trust will be pleasing in your sight, Father. Father, we ask you, Father, not only for the Board of Commissioners, Father, for each person, Father, especially for the leadership of our county, Father. Father, we ask you to bless those leaders, Father, throughout this county, Father. Fathers, they take care of the citizens of this great county we live in, Father. And Father, we don't want to be selfish this morning, but, Father, we ask you to bless, Father, those in our municipalities, Father, a portal register in Brooklyn, Father. Bless those leaders this morning, Father. Father, we ask you to bless our first responder, Father, our law enforcement, Father, and all those that keep us safe, Father, especially our men and women, Father, who are fighting on many fronts, Father. Father, as we get ready to celebrate resurrection Sunday, Father, Easter Sunday, Father, we just ask you, Father, to place on our minds, Father, the significance, Father, of your son, Father, who came, Father, to redeem us, Father. And we just tell you thank you this morning, Father. Fathers, I look around this great county, Father, and I see the blooming of the flowers, Father. Father, they are very beautiful, Father. And, Father, I'm reminded, Father, of the recent weather events, Father. Father, as you're taking care of us through that, Father, and as you were taking care of, Father, the beautiful plants, Father, we just tell you thank you this morning, Father. And then, Father, we're reminded also, Father, as school is nearing the end, Father, that you bless our precious resources, Father, in the schools, Father. Father bless our students, Father bless our teachers, Father administrators, Father, and all that, Father, makes education flow, Father. We just thank you, Father. And, Father, we ask you to bless the farmers, Father, begin the farming season, Father, that you bless them, Father. And if it be your will, Father, we ask you to bless them with abundance of crops, Father. Father, we just thank you for this day, Father. We thank you for your blessings, Father, for you have been so very good to us, Father. In that name, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice
Ms. Mincy Wyatt will call the roll for the Commissioners.
I being Ms. Mincy Wyatt, present as clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the roll for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman David Bennett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Toby Connor.
Ah.
Commissioner Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Nick Newkirk.
Oh.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Ah.
And Commissioner Ray Davis. I have determined that we have all members of the Board of Commissioners present, therefore we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I now lay the floor back to the chairman.
Thank you. So, first thing we're going to do this morning is, we have a presentation, and I don't believe that the folks from LifeLink made it this morning, but we will talk about this. This is National Donate Life Month, and this is for LifeLink of Georgia, what they're, and they're the people that actually go around and, and work to, to get folks organs and skin and tissue donations when people die. This is something that's near and dear to me. Lots of folks are saved every year by, by having organs donated to them. And I will tell you that even in cases where they can't donate organs, oftentimes, they can take tissue like skin and corneas, bone tissue and things like that, and save other people's lives with that stuff. Skin is particularly important for folks that have burn injuries. You know, we can transplant folks with, we can use pig skin and things like that, but nothing is better to graft to another human than human skin that is donated. And they can, they can make that stuff go a long way. So, if you're, if you're not registered as an organ donor, it's something that I hope you would all consider doing, and I'm just going to read this proclamation real quick, and then we'll get this in the mail to them. It says, "Now therefore be it resolved that Bullock County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Donate Life Month in Bullock County, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by taking action and sign up on Georgia's donor registry to discuss the miracle transplantation as a family and to make family commitment to organ, eye, and tissue donation." I'm going to take this and just give it to, to Dow. And I think next up, we've got Mr. Keith Hamilton's going to come up, and he's going to talk to us a little bit about sewage discharge and sewage treatment. First thing everybody wants to talk about in the morning is sewage.
It is not polite dinner conversation, that's for sure.
First thing everybody wants to talk about in the morning is sewage.
We're good. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be able to share some information with you, and we're going to move through this very quickly. You all have printouts of this, it has a lot more information than I'm going to get, and I'm just going to say at any time that stop and ask me any questions if I pass over something that you want to know more about. We're going to discuss the points to consider regarding septic disposal needs for Bullock County next slide. And, um, just as a way of my pedigree, I have a background in chemistry, that's my education and training. I also have a third generation in the septic business. I've also held industrial pretreatment license for operators and laboratory analysts for the state of Georgia, as well as wastewater treatment licenses. Next one. In truth and advertising, I do own a septic contracting business with a fellow of my son, Carson. Many, some of you, I think, know him as well. Next slide. Just to get to a basic point, so that we understand what a septic system does, because this is where we get into the problem. All the problems with disposal and treatment arise from the fact that what comes out of a septic tank is different than what goes out of your sewage drain if you're on a municipal or city system. A septic tank basically functions as a large filter, and the two catchwords are capturing and concentrating. And the septic tank captures and concentrates domestic sanitary waste, so solids get trapped in there and they build up over time. Next slide. Septic tanks in Georgia, as well as throughout the country, have become, they used to be called decentralized wastewater treatment systems, now they're called onsite wastewater management systems. You'll notice there are four groups, four bureaucracies there, the Bullock County Board of Health, the Bullock County Environmental Health Office, the Georgia Department of Public Health, as well as the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. Those are four of 24 county, state, and federal agencies that as a septic pumper I'm subject to. We are a ridiculously overregulated industry, and I just make you aware of that. These four are the ones that we deal with directly. I hear from the other 20 on occasions. Now, this is the difference that we need to pay a lot of attention to, so just bear with me. It is codified in our state statutes and regulations that sewage and septic are two entirely different things, and that, again, is where the problem arises. Sewage is defined as to include human bodily waste, black water, water carried waste, liquid household waste from residential, commercial, and industrial establishments. That phrase "liquid" is the operative phrase in that, that particular definition. Septage is a waste that is a fluid mixture, it is not a liquid. It is, you might consider the difference between sewage and septic a difference between cane juice and cane syrup, and the cane syrup can sometimes get thick as peanut butter. But septic is a mix that's partially treated or untreated, liquid sudge, human and domestic waste, and then the operative point here is it is present in or pumped from septic tanks, malfunctioning onsite wastewater management systems, or privies. Now, you'll notice there's an overlap here, these exact same definitions appear in the Georgia Department of Public Health onsite manual, and then word for word, they're in the 511 regulations from the Department of Natural Resources. The next slide. The challenge with this, in treating the, disposing of this, is septic is far more concentrated than sewage. Typically, it's 150 to 250 times more concentrated. Rule of thumb, we generally think of it as being 200 times as concentrated nutrients, pathogens, pollutants, medications, you name it. Again, septic tank collects all of it and concentrates it. The septic is a product of an anaerobic microbial digestion, whereas what you think of as a traditional wastewater treatment plant is an aerobic system. Anaerobic systems do work, but they are very, very slow, and they're also limited in what they can do. Now, the two things that really give us the most problems now, septic is ultra-concentrated levels of nutrients and pathogens. These include diseases, bacteria, viruses. For the longest time, the biggest concern for a septic pumper was being sure not to get typhoid or hepatitis. But today, the leading concern that we have, and we do continual education on a rolling every two-year plan, everything that they've talked about lately is septic retains concentrated levels of drugs and medications, particularly prescription pharmaceuticals and chemotherapy drugs. The chemotherapy drugs are our biggest concern at this point, the palladium platinum and iridium salts that are left behind, concentrated in those tanks. We are potentially exposed to somewhere between 500 and 1,000 times what therapeutic doses are. That also is a problem when it comes to treatment. And so, all of these things add up, that once we try to dump septic into a sewage treatment plant, many sewage treatment plants won't take it because it causes so many problems. But nevertheless, we still have to get rid of it somehow. Those of you that have ever, next slide, please, those of you that ever had septic problems, understand that whenever it's backing up in the shower or it's flooding your house, it is a crisis and something's got to be done about it. Somebody's going to come and pump it, but we got to get rid of it somehow. Challenges with disposal also are by law, they're required to be discharged into a Georgia DNR EPD permitted facility. There are civil and criminal penalties for illegally dumping it. There are occasions where some pumpers that chronically dump illegally do go to prison, and so I do want you to be aware. It is enforced, and there are heavy fines along, associated with that. Also, septic discharge fees are a significant cost for us, and so as we move forward, whatever may be decided to be done, understand this is something we would be paying for. Not asking you to do anything to subsidize the septic pumpers, not asking for you to hand us any money or do anything free for us. We'll pay our way, but we have got to have some help in order to continue to legally operate in, in our county as we're required to by our, our local and especially the state and federal regulations. Not all Georgia EPD permitted wastewater facilities will accept septic, it's at the discretion of the operator. If he's having problems meeting his discharge permit, the answer is no. In our area, out of 27 fairly local wastewater treatment plants, there are only six that will actually take septic. So, it is a problem for us. The availability is limited, and less convenience and efficiency means increased operating costs, less efficiency and convenience also means likelihood of illegal dumping. I will tell you, I'm certain, I feel absolutely certain, it goes on, and, but it shouldn't. And there are ways, the easier we make this, the less likelihood we're going to encourage that, and less incentive there will be. In the next slide. Septage removal and disposal, you'll again notice there is regulatory overlap. That same, that definition is taken from the 511 regulations, that is, the Department of Natural Resources. That same definition, word for word, appears in the Department of Public Health manual in the 2019 revision. You will notice, and I just cued it for that, it specifically states the Environmental Protection Division, and then the manual is referenced at the conclusion, so you have an overlap of two state agencies that at least are on the same page with one another. I just want y'all to appreciate frustration we have trying to do a two-step for two different state bureaucracies all at the same time. Approval methods for disposal, it requires that it be discharged into a system that is approved by the EPD. I don't have any dispute with that, it's just a simple fact of the matter that it is not convenient for us, and our county is really just not pulling our own weight and paying our own weight. The next two slides, we'll move through quickly, I'm not going to read all of these, you have them. The first one is important, statewide, septic disposal operates on the presumption that each county will be responsible indirectly or directly to provide adequate and properly permitted wastewater treatment capacity for the septic generated by its own citizens and businesses. Please be aware that some of the most heavily populated counties in our state also have large numbers of septic systems. Just because population grows doesn't mean the counties have invested in having any sewage capacity or collection system. Four, a few counties, particularly those experience rapid growth and rising population densities, have built their own treatment facilities, and of course, we haven't. Skip to that, next slide number seven. What I'm really asking y'all to do is to consider this. I, I know that y'all got a lot on your plate, and I appreciate that, and I know when we start talking about water and wastewater, whether it's sewage or septic, we start talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars. I really am going to point number seven to you, and I direct you to that, and that is to shift this from a view of just simply dollars and cents, and whether it's practical to do this or that. Of course, we do want to be practical and pragmatic, but switch to a perspective of stewardship. How do you consider this in light of your own family's health? How do you consider this in light of enjoying hunting and fishing? How do you do this in consideration of public health? Whenever something's dumped illegally, they're going to dump it in the woods. Very often, they're going to go down in a creek bed or somewhere else and dump a heavily concentrated pollutant-infested and toxic waste that's going to go directly into the river. And you and your family are going to want to go have recreation there, you're going to want to fish there, you're going to want to hunt there. There are immediate and direct consequences of this not being done properly. Now, again, somebody's broken the law, but we need to make it as convenient for them as possible to, to try to discourage that. We're not going to be able to break up all of it, probably, but we can certainly minimize it from what it is now. Next slide, please. I've shared this information with you before. The last 40 years, we've had almost a 290% increase in our population. The population of Bullock County has largely essentially tripled. Over the next 25 years, it is projected to increase by at least 50% again. Now, our county has been number one in the state of Georgia for new septic permits for the last five years. There are more new septic systems going in in Bullock County than any other county in the state of Georgia for the last five years. We have been in the top three counties for the last 20 years. We have experienced that rate of growth over a 40-year period, and it probably extends back further than that, as far as Bullock County being one of the leaders in the state. Nevertheless, that trend to some extent is going to continue. Now, there may be some mitigating circumstances we can talk about in some other form, but it's largely going to continue to grow, and it's going to be a bigger and a bigger problem. Next slide, please, sir. The outhouse ain't what it used to be, and we have, right now, we're estimating about 58,000. I've revised these numbers, talking with some people more since our last meeting. That number's going to continue to grow, nobody really knows how many there are. Records only go back to 1984, and there were a substantial number of tanks put in prior to that, obviously. And quite honestly, there's a lot of illegal installments going on. We are, to a large degree, still a rural county, some folks are still managing to skirt the procedures, but we really don't know. But essentially, there's about 58,000 or so septic tanks in our county. Next slide. Shared this with you before, we have eight in-county pumpers, we service about 1,800 tanks a year, there are at least nine from out of county that come in and also do work here, and they service, from the best estimates I can get, around 700. So, we're pumping about 2,500 tanks a year. That's only about 4%. That's not very much. If you do that, roll out the average, that means the tanks get pumped, on average, about every 20 to 25 years. The guidelines for the Department of Public Health, EPA, EPD, say that they are supposed to be pumped every five to seven years. That would put us on the order of pumping 10 to 11,000 tanks a year in our county. We don't have the infrastructure to do that. The next slide. Solving the septic disposal needs for our county, over 95%, over 95% of the septic pumped in Bullock County is disposed out of county. In-county pumpers are heavily dependent on meter and portal, and that's only because of their good graces. I know portal is in Bullock. Meter takes the overwhelming amount that we, we pump. And they're very gracious about that. How long they will continue to do so, we do not know. But at this point, we take advantage of it because it is a cooperative relationship. Use of an adequate in-county facility would be convenient, efficient, and cost effective for the pumpers, and again, would also increase compliance as well as be a value and saving to the citizens and the residents. Quite honestly, the further we got to tote that stuff, and the more we got to pay to get rid of it, the more it's going to cost the folks in this county for us to come pump Looking at that slide that's up there now, there are 2,500 septic tanks, they are on average, there are typically 1,000 to 2,000 gallons each. To give you an idea, that adds up to 2.5 to 3 million gallons of septic per year. If you multiply that by 200, the concentration, kind of give a comparable number to regular domestic household, you're looking at 500 to 600 million gallons a year. That puts us on the order of about a million gallons a day, as far as the effluent loading, the amount of pollutants, the amount of nutrients and so forth, that we are discharging. All right, move to the next one. All right, this is the slide we looked at, I would point you to the last one, septic pumpers pay substantial discharge fees to dispose of septic, and I'll just simply tell you, this is a fee for service, okay? It's not something that we're asking you to do. There, there are no free rides, okay? Next one. Now, solving our disposal needs, there were, I've put an awful lot of thought into this, been dealing with this for years, there are three ways we can go. First, we can build and operate a wastewater treatment facility that is specifically designed for septic only, okay? That would be your least expensive operation, it would be the smallest that you would have to build, and also, it would be the loss, least cost-effective per, per gallon, but it would be your overall smallest capital investment. The second option is to build and operate a centralized sewage wastewater treatment facility with sewage collection networks that also accept septic, and that'd put the county in the sewage business, and several of you have told me you're not in favor of that. I respect that, it's not something I would particularly want to see either. At some point, it may become inevitable. You've got to appreciate the fact that we are not technically a rural county anymore, nobody else looks at us that way. And I do appreciate our farmers, and I appreciate our farming legacy, and I grieve over the fact that we're losing that. As all my friends like to say, we are living through, painfully, living through the Atlantification of our homeland. Y'all know good and well, you can't get from one side of the county to the other now, it's an hour and trip or better because of the traffic congestion, it's only going to get worse. The third option is to purchase treatment capacity from Bryan County. They're not going to sell that capacity for less than it costs them to build, and from the best reading I have, they are not likely to accept septic. I don't know, unless we dilute it with, with regular household sewage somewhere along the way. Next slide. Just quickly, out of the Bryan-Bullock Water and Sewer Service Agreement, Bullock County has the option to buy, purchase up to 250,000 gallons per day initially of capacity, and the statement is, "Pro rata share of all costs," is what it will take for Bullock County to get that. I really appreciated the meeting we had a while back with Mr. Hodstatter and Mr. Rohan, and Mr. Hodstatter threw out the figure $30 per gallon to build a plant, so it's 30 million for a million gallon a day plant. Also, it's my understanding Bryan County's building, as Mr. Hodstatter said, a Cadillac system, and nothing against that, they're actually paying around $32 a gallon in construction of that. So, if we go that route, and we bought capacity, and they did accept our septic, it's the most expensive route that you can possibly go. It would be much cheaper for us to build our own. Then, future capacity, Bullock County has the option to go from that 250,000 gallons a day up to a million gallons a day, and the agreement says, "100% of all costs associated with modifying, improving, or expanding the Bryan County facility will be at the expense of Bullock County." You're going to pay to build something that you still don't own. And then, number nine, in the sewage treatment, Bryan County will accept for treatment only domestic strength wastewater. And just as I mentioned to you a little while ago, this is where that regulatory definition of sewage and septic comes in. Nobody considers septic to be domestic wastewater strength, the same as sewage, it's not. And that's why there are regulations specific to it. This is something we would have to ask specifically and pointedly. The domestic wastewater definition in that same agreement simply means wastewater that is derived from residential dwellings, business dwellings, institutions, and the like. But it does not mention anything about septic tanks, septic, septic pumping, or anything in that agreement anywhere. And given the conditions that they're going to be operating under, I really don't think they're going to be inclined to do it, and in my reading of the definitions, and in my past experience, we're not likely to be able to, to discharge even if we bought the capacity. Next slide, please, sir. NIMBY, everybody knows about not in my backyard, and I understand that and I respect that. What I will tell you very simply about NIMBY is it's a bigger issue now than it was 10 or 20 years ago. Would have been easier to do this 10 or 20 years ago. I will also tell you that it is not as big an issue right now as it's going to be five years from now, 10 years from now, or 20 years from now. 25 years from now, if there's 150,000 people living in this county, you're going to have a whole lot harder problem finding a place to build a facility and have everybody around it good with it. I'm just going to tell you, y'all can come build this thing next to me, we got 400 acres for sale, and y'all could buy it. Problem is, I don't think the land's suitable for it. But knowing and having a background in this industry, I'm not as averse to it as others, so I'm going to be the odd man out. Next slide, please. I would just simply counsel you friendly that NIMBY is not a legitimate reason to do nothing, okay? No matter what you do, somebody's not going to be happy. And overall, we've got to look at the advantage of the population as a whole, and to the, also, protecting the environment and, and our natural resources. Next, or this slide, it's only money. And again, I'll just tell you friendly, Bullock County's got more money going through it right now than it ever has in the entire time it's existed. So, nobody ever has, well, hardly any governments have tens or hundreds of millions of dollars sitting around with nothing to do with it. But I do understand also that any solution that we come up with is going to cost substantially more later. It, it costs more now than what it would have, but it's also costs less now than it's ever going to. If you want to build some type of treatment facility, you'll never build it later than for the same amount you could right now, it's as cheap as it's ever going to be. The next slide, and happily, the last one. Solving the disposal needs for our county, I want you to understand, I'm not asking you to spend $30 million or $100 million, okay? That's up to you to decide if that's what we need to do. I'm not asking you to do this for my company, for me personally, or for any other benefit in helping me to do my job to help the people of the county. We actually, one of the great joys of the We actually, one of the great joys of the work that I do is, everybody's glad when the septic man shows up, they are happy to see him. So we do solve problems for people, and we make life more tolerable and more pleasant for people. I am asking you this, do not Nancy Reagan this, do not simply say no. Make an informed decision. If you'll do your homework and look into this and see exactly what our options are, how much it could potentially cost, you may make a decision that, no, we're still gonna continue to do things like we are, I will disagree with you and I'll respect you, we will have a respectful disagreement. If you just simply say no and hide your head in the sand, and we don't start pulling our own weight, then I'm not gonna have that respect, and I'm going to be really irritating. And then, the last thing there, again, I'm asking you to consider this for the lives of my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren, I want them to have at least some joy, I want them to be able to go play in the river, I want to be able to run in the woods, I want them to be able to do many of the things that you and I have done. The county you and I grew up in, and the county you and I have enjoyed, is gone. We gotta make the most of what the future is, we're going to be living in an urban area very soon, and we wanna preserve as much of that quality as we can, particularly the quality of life as it relates to protection of the environment, preservation of natural resources, and protecting public health, and that really, again, goes back to the last issue, a switching of that perspective of stewardship. I appreciate your time.
Keith, let me ask you some things. Our Cola septic tank, and that kinda explains itself to me and you where you're located at, but for most people, it's in our Cola, and for transparency, I'm one of the nine, he mentioned, I own tri-county septic service, so I know a little bit more about it than most people, me and Keith talk a lot, how far do you usually travel to carry a load?
From our location, it's thirty-five miles one way to Portal and to Metter.
Yeah.
And we're out of service for two and a half to three hours.
Yep, and just to make some points so everybody understands, you have certain amount of septic tank problems, it don't matter, all year long, if you got a bad septic tank, you got one that's failing, it's gonna fail. Now, when it's gonna fail the most is when it's wet weather, rainy weather, and people over for Christmas, Easter, whatever holidays you have family gatherings, that's when it's gonna tell the tale. And most of the time, when that happens, Metter and Portal, they take it, they do. Most of the time, they get overwhelmed, like Keith's saying, it's condensed, it throws their pH off, they have to shut them down, so when they shut them down, pretty much everybody in Bullock County's out of business with the septic tank holding, unless, like he said, unless you're gonna illegally dump it somewhere because there's nowhere for it to go. And like Keith mentioned, we not asking, I guess, the county to front the money, but it will pay for itself, I mean, we paying for other peoples right now, I mean, and water and wastewater is a cash cow, if it wasn't, you wouldn't see the people in all the water business and the wastewater business. It's a cash cow, it'll pay for itself, it's not gonna get any better, and you mentioned the residential, mostly talked about residential, well, everybody worries about their tax bill, and everybody worries about ISO rating and buying all these fire trucks and all that we do, and that's something we have to worry about. But this is just a hidden, this is a hidden thing, and if it keeps going like it's going, to get your septic tank pumped, and if you ain't on a septic tank system, it doesn't really bother you, but it's gonna bother the city of states where I can tell you, because they farther and farther behind, just like we are. I think their mention was forty-five-hundred new houses that they waiting on to build out, I think James Pope gave me the number of forty-three-hundred in Bullock County that's gonna be to build out, and so when the septic tank man's backs up to your house, if something don't change, you automatically gonna get a whole year's tax bill handed to you at one time for what your property taxes cost you just to pump your septic tank. Now, I know everybody's lost, there's a fellow named, I think his name was Chris Cumnick, that me and, that we all take our, we have to go to these donut eating classes, I call them, for our continuing education, and he is a super sharp fellow with all of this. And if you go to Portal, so we all from Portal, Portal consists of a three-acre pond, five? Three-acre lined pond, it's got aerobic systems in it, and then I think they pump out to a spray field over a pasture with a pivot. Now, the only thing about that is you can't bale the hay and set it down, let animals eat it, you can bale the hay and they can use it for, Dink and them can use it for erosion protection on the side of the new constructions or whatever, or throw it away, or whatever you got to do with it. It's not that big of a money cost to the county to do something like that. And just the initial cost, and probably there's a grant for it, I don't know, we talked about grant writers, but it's just the initial cost to build a three-acre pond and line it and all, and that's gonna be a little more costly than a fish pond, yeah, you got to line it, and you got to put pumps in, you got to do this, but it will pay for itself because when they pumping, they receiving, how many trucks would you think Metter would receive when it rains on a day?
They cut it all, cut us off at twenty-five trucks a day.
So, you know, that's twenty-five trucks a day, and you can just depend on that, but I just want everybody to understand that, and we hadn't even talked about, and of course you can talk about it, every time saver, every store you stop at, that's a commercial system.
Yes.
So elaborate on that for them, please, as far as.
Yeah, commercial systems, when we talk about commercial septic tanks, generally, we're talking about convenience stores, barber shops, banks, restaurants, schools, anything where there is domestic waste, where there's human activity, but it is not a residence, and those tanks typically are around two, fifteen-hundred to two-thousand gallons, but there are some in this county that are over five-thousand gallons. So, for instance, when you go through Brooklyn, and you look at every little business along the way, every shop, every convenience store, every restaurant, everything, there's only a septic tank, and so anything that is not a primary residence or rental residence is considered commercial.
And you don't even wanna get into anybody that's got a dog clinic or anything where they do dog care, that is just, and we were speaking of Bryan County, and the number was two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons a day, or five-hundred, what was the Bryan County tank? But they not, now, they talking about concentrated, they not gonna let him bring two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons over there, he might, out of the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons, they might let you bring twenty trucks, and that'll wind up, that'll wind up what they can handle through the pH balance of treating the water. So, the cheapest way to do it is like a reticent pond, and I don't know if that's still, I mean, I don't know if that's outdated or what, it would take somebody like, I wish that we could've got somebody from the Health Department, even Chris maybe can come.
That falls under EPD, and they are currently still, that permit's open, and that is for an aerobic treatment system with land application.
Just.
You can't get a discharge permit into a body of water.
Well, that's, and that's what everybody's gonna have to concern, like he just said, now, I've been preaching it since I've been here, if you got a septic tank, it's just as much your problem as ours, and eventually, it gonna cut us off, because even now, he'll tell you, when they make you keep a log in that truck, and they either make, you got to tell them where it comes from, if you carry it to another county, most counties won't even accept it if it got their address on it, and like illegal dumping, they force you to not be so honest when you tell where it's coming from, I mean, that's just, that's just how it goes, I mean, it can't stay, we got trucks, there's two-hundred-thousand-dollar trucks, it can't sit on our truck, I mean, it don't make the payment sitting on the truck, it's got to be, it's got to go somewhere, and it's actually Bullock County's responsibility, it's all me included, sitting up here passing these subdivisions, steady passing the subdivision, and what'd you call it, NIMBY? Well, we see that a lot, everybody comes and don't want a cellphone tower, but they'll have a cellphone on their side, you know, I don't want that by my house, but I mean, they departed the problem because they on the cellphone, and when we hear that through trash and everything else, but this is a problem for Bullock County, and it ain't a bad one now, but when it gets to be one, it's gonna be a big one, and it's gonna be a bad one.
Yes, wish all very happy Easter, thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question for you real quick, what would a small treatment plant cost just to handle septic tank trucks only? Not to get into subdivision, but just do septic tanks?
I looked at one, well, it was 2019, so that's the pre-pandemic, we were looking around seven to eight million dollars to build a five-hundred-thousand gallon a day capacity system exclusively for septic, and I would estimate that we can probably build one about twelve, thirteen, maybe fourteen million, rather than going through the high end and building large capacity, ten-million-gallon clarifiers and sedimentation tanks with reinforced concrete, like Timmy was talking about, dig a hole in the ground and put an approved liner in it, it's a cheaper way to do it, it's still reliable, that's what Metter does, that's what Portal does, there's a thousand of those in the state of Georgia, and it can be more cost-effective, we can do it for less than half of the thirty-dollar per gallon that Mr. Hodstatter had suggested.
And to mention this, just to give some people some, how it works is, you back up to what they call a maximizer is what it is, when they start them septic tank something, pull them up in them trucks, it's kinda like a slushie is what it is, and then you back up to that maximizer where you dump at, and it catches any kind of plastic material, any kind of stuff that will not dissolve or anything, it catches that, and then it lets the rest of it go through and go out into ponds, it's aerated and broken down for so many days, and then pumped out onto the leach field or the pasture, or whatever you wanna call it. And then the stuff that goes through the maximizer, it goes into a container and goes to the landfill, so it's not like these spraying plastic and whatever you can imagine in your septic tank out on the grass, I mean, it's a pretty pasture. And the thing about septic water, everybody smells septic water in their yard, and it's, boy, I smell that septic tank, and if you live in a neighborhood, I can walk in that neighborhood, and I can tell you, if somebody's got a problem in that neighborhood, I say, I smell a septic tank, and it'll be a four-hundred unit right or wrong, Keith.
I smell money, but yeah.
Yeah, that's right, I can smell it, I say, somebody's got a problem, you know, and so, it isn't that big of a, it isn't that big of a deal, but it's gonna have to be taken on by the county, and I've even had people such as Keith and all, this can't, it can be privately done, but the commissioners are gonna have to allow it to be done, number one, and just as sure as you say, okay, well, there's a piece of land over here, and I can promise you that there's gonna be a pile of people, well, if they out in the county, they don't accept your tanks, so, I mean, but try to place it strategically best you can, but it's got to be on some sandy land, it's got to be, because it's gonna have water every day, and it can be privately done, but then when it's privately done, then the county loses control of operating it and managing it and all, I'd rather see the county do it because it would just be run a whole lot better, I think, but it's something to be done, now, everybody can get ready for it, because it's something to be done.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Keith, how many acres are we talking about that you would need for this twelve-to-fourteen million dollar system?
Sprayfield's gonna, for a tank, a system that size, a sprayfield needs to be somewhere between forty and fifty acres, so you're talking about the rest, less than sixty acres.
And it would be very light land, very sandy land, not farmland, we not, it wouldn't be hunting anything that the farmer would even be interested in unless he wanted it for a pack.
It has to be well-drained.
It can't be sixty acre size of a river, what kind of restrictions from a workflow and water source?
That would come in with your engineering and the EPD permitting process. You know, Metter sits literally right on a creek, and, but they're not allowed to discharge into that creek, and I guess no matter where you put it, you always have the potential, of course, tank in the ground, or a pond in the ground has less likelihood of, than a tank rupturing, but obviously, wisdom dictates that we've got to have some kind of a setback, because there's always that potential that something catastrophic could happen. We get another tropical storm Debbie come through here, and twenty inches of rain's gonna overflow any and everything. So I would have to research that a little bit more, but that would be involved in the EPD permitting process, and you also have to get the land approved, you'd have to have a soil scientist as well as an engineering study to determine that it can have, hold the capacity. Just as, for instance, Claxton Poultry ran into this recently, if y'all familiar with that, remember that they were inadvertently draining into the Canucci River, and had to move their sprayfields, because the land had become saturated over a period of use for many years, and I think now, they have to convey that waste ten to twelve miles to a new sprayfield.
Yeah, it goes over to one-sixty-nine at Allen-Pawson Track, or wherever I rise down, one-sixty-nine sees that nice, pretty pasture out there, you don't see any cows, that's because it's a sprayfield for plastic.
Yeah, it's not polite in a conversation, but there's an awful lot involved in contemplating and solving all of the issues related to this, and it's a whole lot more aggravating than most people appreciate.
Is there any way to ramp up Portal? Do they have enough room?
Yeah, the, one of the problems with Portal, and I don't, and we can't ramp it up big enough, is when they installed that system, all of the stormwater for a four-mile square area also dumps into that same system, and that's every time they get a rain over two inches, they're shut down for a week because they're inundated with water. And basically, you'd have to redo the entire system to change that, and that's through no fault of anybody, at the time, they thought it was a good idea, but Portal would probably be about adequate if that's all, that facility, if all it did was took our septic, would meet our needs, but remember, you've got a population of a couple thousand people that's discharging into that.
And to, Portal would probably do, like Keith said, but, and me and him talked about it, so he's our Cola and I'm Register, well, going to Metter, I got him beat fifty miles, because he's got, come from our Cola and go by me, and then he's got to turn and come back, so he's got an extra fifty mile charge, it needs to be, to be fair to every citizen that's gonna have to pay for their septic tank getting pumped, and to be fair to everybody that's in the business, it needs to be kinda centrally located in Bullock County if it's gonna take Bullock County's waste, I mean, I know you can't put it in the middle of states where, but I mean, as centrally located as you can possibly get it, because if not, now Keith's son and my son-in-law get along great, they're good buddies, and so they maintain a good, a good price range between each other to maintain a good, a good business relationship, but actually, Keith is probably losing money over what we have to pay, because, I mean, that truck is fifty miles on that truck on him every time he goes to our Cola to Metter, right back and forth by our shop, and so, it needs to be centrally located. As far as answering these questions, I think the first thing we would need to do is get somebody like Chris come down here, and I don't know if, make Keith, me and you ain't got nothing to do, we'll make you head, you need to be on a committee, and then you can answer all the EPD questions, and what we can do, if we can do a lines, I know things get, some might can't, we might can't do a line pond no more, I don't know, I know that we used to could, I kept up with that close.
They still allow them.
So, get the information and come back with the price that you asked Mr. Davis to get us closer on the money, and we'll know what we need to do. But first thing we need is some guidance as far as, if it's gonna be allowed, ain't nobody beating our head against the wall if everybody's gonna say, oh, no, well, it can't go there because so-and-so don't want it, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it sounds like we need to possibly form a committee to look into this matter, since it seems, since it is going to be a big matter, maybe we could get Mr. Keith and some other individuals to form a committee to look into this, and maybe come back to us with something that we can look at.
It would probably.
That would be my suggestion, I don't know.
It would probably Marlin or one of them from the Health Department would keep it, because.
That's what I'm saying.
They in trouble too, I mean, they, they trying to manage these wastes, look, you got septic tanks all running in these subdivisions, and they know there's nowhere that they can send it, but now they trying to please everybody in the subdivisions, but they're not beating Keith and us up because they know what kind of pinch we in too, as far as, you know, so, I feel assured that if they could get more teeth into the situation that they in, where they could really enforce what they need to be enforcing, they would appreciate it, they have, they have at their wits' end too, I have talked with them, so.
Would you be willing to sit down with the Health Department and talk with them if we formed a committee?
Sure, yes, we have a very good relationship with Marlin and all of his crew, and the EPD will be involved very heavily in this, so we'll have to reach out and make some contacts with them, and try to get them involved, get some guidance from them, but yeah, I will be willing to.
Okay.
And just some more insight, Keith is the only preacher you know that pumps septic tanks.
Yeah, and that prepared me for taking a lot of stuff from a lot of people, pretty hands.
What do we want to do, gentlemen? We wanna just table this for now so that we can make some phone calls and talk with the Health Department and see about forming a committee? Do we want to go ahead and just make a motion to form this committee? How y'all want to handle this?
I would make a motion that we go ahead and form the committee and let them talk with the health department. We'll form a committee, maybe save one person from the health department, Keith, being he so graciously volunteered to head it up.
Believe that was voluntold, but.
Yeah, well, he's used to. But if that's if that's good with y'all.
Is that a motion that I'm hearing from you? And we got a second from Mr. Simmons here? Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
If bread and chicken litter on agricultural land is any qualification for this committee, I'd be willing to serve one.
And there you go, there's a commissioner that's willing to be on the committee with them, so. Okay, so go ahead.
And I make, and I'm, I've told you all this before, but anytime you form a committee, it's going to be subject to the Open Meetings Act.
We're going to have a working group about that.
I think if you appoint, formally appoint people, it's going to be a committee, no matter what you call it, I mean.
Okay.
And I'm not, and that's not, I don't, I'm not saying it shouldn't be done in public, but you're just going to have to comply with all the, it's going to put more on Venus, you're going to have to keep minutes.
Well, I think right now what we want to do is is have a group of folks have a conversation and sit down and put their heads together. Is that what I'm hearing? So tell us how we can legally go about doing this without.
Well, I think you could form, you know, an informal, like you could ask certain people to sort of on a working group. But I think if the commissioners formally appoint people to a group, you can call it a group, but it's it's still going to be, in other words, if you make the appointments, the board, then I think it's, I think it's subject to open meetings.
I would.
And that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I know I made a statement about forming a committee, but I do serve on a health board.
Okay.
I don't know whether I need to exclude myself from being on that committee or not.
I don't think that's going to be a conflict of interest there with you being on the the health board there. So, okay, gentlemen, how are we going to do this? We're going to carry this motion through or are we going to just table this motion for now and?
No, I'd rather carry it through because I don't want it to die, I've seen it get this far.
We can't, we can't just agree to form a committee, necessarily appoint and then let the chairman appoint them afterwards? Not really vote on the people? That's not legally. We can all agree to have this committee under form, I mean, you know? And they don't make a difference if it's public or not, I mean.
I can tell you there'd be.
Don't really matter, but we got, we don't need to be tying up.
It'll be least amount of people show up for a septic tank meeting as you ever seen a meeting show up.
Well, and it's not, it's not so much.
You ain't got to worry about being flooded out with with people.
That's not really the issue. The Open Meetings Act, and Venus can tell you, she's got to do all these different things.
That's right, I'm forgetting that.
And if I were you, if y'all want to have a like a group to study this issue, I would just withdraw the motion and let the chairman just contact people about, can y'all, you know, get a group, informal group together.
And I'm more than happy to do that if y'all will.
And if y'all want to notify the public about when you're meeting, that's fine.
We don't notify the public, we know what we talking about.
Sure.
We got to notify the public after we know what we talking about. Because we don't even know what.
Right, but I'm talking about if you want to have meetings and just let the public know when you're meeting, you can do that, you don't have to. But but that that will mean, you know, Venus won't necessarily have to be there, she won't have to notify the media, she won't have to take minutes. And that, you know, that would be.
That'd be fine. As far as like Mr. Keith and Mr. Ray, I'm going to excuse myself, recuse myself because I am in the business and I don't need to be involved in. Robert Seaman's right over there from the great city of Statesboro, Georgia knows all about it because he helped run the wastewater plant out here at Statesboro, he's public works.
So I think we still have a motion on the table. Before we do anything, we need to withdraw this motion, is that correct?
Whoever made the motion can withdraw it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take this opportunity to withdraw my motion, please.
Okay. Motion withdrawn? All right, and then we're just going to move forward. I'll 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 get in touch with Mr. Hamilton and these other folks and we'll move forward from there. How about that? Okay. All right, I believe that wraps up that. Well, I got jokes, but I'll save them for later. So before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any discussion or modification desired by the interim county manager or the board?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, have two items. Number one would be add to new business employee health insurance premiums. Second item is under executive session to add real estate. And that's all.
Do we have any other modifications? If there's no further discussion, I'm going to call for a motion on the general agenda here.
To approve with modica modifications, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? We have a unanimous decision on that, Ms. Mincy. Okay, next up, we've got our public comments.
We've just got the one last, or two?
Okay. So before I, or excuse me, at this time, I would recognize the citizens who have signed up to address the board. Once your name's called, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and make your comments. All speakers who are recognized will be allotted five minutes.
And we have representatives of Banks Creek Church Road, Lenoir Harden and Louise Mosley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, constituents and citizens of Banks Creek Church Road Community, if you all are staying. We are just here to represent that community from Rocket Ford Road to Ponderosa. And we are working on a request to have that road paved. We didn't come to have a lot of comments today, but we want to keep you all reminded that that is our goal and we are doing what we can to meet your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe that concludes our public comments. We'll move into the consent agenda here. So number one, approve the minutes from Tuesday, April first, 2025 budget work session. Approve the minutes from Tuesday, April first, 2025 regular meeting. Approve the minutes from Tuesday, April first, 2025 executive session. Approve a service and support contract with Vertiv Corporation for five unerifted power supply units in the amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars. Approve a payment to Jenkins County C and D landfill for mulch disposal, March twenty six, 2025 through March twenty eight, 25, in the amount of thirty eight thousand nine hundred and eighty eight dollars and fifty cents. Approve a special event permit for the Georgia Police Foundation to host a nonprofit event at Ogieci Technical College, 20 Joe Kennedy Boulevard on May ninth, 2025, from 5:00 PM until 11:00 PM. Approve and ratify a culvert pipe purchase order from Cherokee Culvert Company Incorporated in the amount of twenty one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Approve and ratify a culvert pipe purchase order from Cherokee Culvert Company Incorporated in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety two dollars. Approve the purchase of a dome liner and pool tarp for splash in the Borough Aquatic Center from Horizon Building Systems in the amount of one hundred twelve thousand four hundred and seventy nine dollars. Approve a purchase order in the amount of forty one thousand five hundred dollars for electrical work for the new office building for the crime suppression unit of the sheriff's department office on Randy Lowery Road. Approve a purchase order in the amount of thirty five thousand six hundred dollars for plumbing work of the new office building for the crime suppression division of the sheriff's office on Randy Lowery Road. And number 12, finally, approve of payment to Jenkins County C and D landfill for mulch disposal, April first, 2025 through April fourth, 2025, in the amount of thirty five thousand six hundred and ninety nine dollars. We can approve all these items collectively or we can move any item to new business for further discussion.
I'd like to pull number nine out, please.
Number nine, go into new business. Any others? If not, can I get a motion?
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? I don't vote, sorry. We got a unanimous decision here. So moving on to new business. Number one, Public Works Director Dink Butler, approval of Public Works purchases six replacement work trucks from Allen J Fleet Sales totaling four hundred and ninety one thousand six hundred and two dollars under Sourcewell contracts.
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Robert Seaman, Assistant Public Works Director of both counties. As stated, this is purchase of replacement work trucks for solid waste division, fleet maintenance division, transportation division. And y'all have the packet there with each one of the vehicles and I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
I'm just want to clarify, this is for replacement vehicles, right? This is not adding to the fleet?
That is correct.
This is just replacements, okay? Okay. What do we do with the old vehicles that we finish with?
These vehicles will go to surplus. We actually working on a list right now, Ms. Fay and purchasing, to bring before y'all on quite a few things for surplus items.
Okay.
Do we have any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, do we have a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Say.
All in favor? Venus, we got a unanimous decision.
Thank you.
Next up, got county engineer Brad Deal. Motion to approve a bid and enter into contract with Reeves Construction Company for the construction of the Nevilles Denmark Road Bridge Culvert Replacement Project in the amount of nine hundred or nine hundred twenty four thousand nine hundred dollars to be funded by T-Sploß with mitigation assistance funding request pending from FEMA and GMA.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Brad Deal, county engineer. So as, I'm sure you all remember, Bots Culvert on Nevilles Denmark Road just, I guess this would be just north, I mean, excuse me, just south of State Route 46 was damaged during tropical storm Debbie. We did, we got a hydrology study completed on it, which we did submit to FEMA and we're going through that process with them at this time. But we're moving ahead with, at this time, with construction in that we have a Bots Culvert design that will, the existing Bots Culvert was a double barrel, ten foot by six foot Bots Culvert that was undermined, the during the storm, the water actually washed underneath it, caused it to settle and rotate a little bit. So the new culvert is going to be slightly larger than that one, it's going to be a triple barrel, eight by seven. And it will have wing walls and aprons on each end. I think the existing culvert did have wing walls, but it did not have an apron at the bottom to protect from erosion around the bottom of the pipe. So again, we are still going through the process with FEMA and GMA. We do, all indications seem to point to we're going to get reimbursement of more than fifty percent of what the cost of this project is going to be. We don't have an exact figure at this point from them. But we're planning to move ahead with the project at this time, utilizing the T-Sploß funds to get the project initiated and hopefully we will get reimbursement from FEMA and GMA. But I'll be happy to take any questions if you all have any.
How is this job compared to the Brandon Pond Road Culvert? It's very similar to that, time wise and all that stuff, you thinking about the same? Or when are y'all looking at starting and when are we looking at finishing on it?
It's very similar. We've got a hundred and twenty day contract time on this contract, which is, I believe, the same as what what Brandon Pond Road was. But one difference in in the project is that this this box culvert will be cast in place as opposed to the one at Brandon Pond Road, which was a precast box culvert. So, but we did keep basically the same schedule. So it, I think that that may have affected the cost a little bit, not so much the schedule.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak? Brandon Pond Road, what did it cost us? What did we get reimbursed? And that should be a similar circumstances, correct?
Will be, we do think it'd be similar. I don't have the figures in front of me, but I think the the cost of Brandon Pond Road was somewhere around six hundred, six hundred eighty two thousand, is what I want to say?
Yes, sir.
And we haven't actually gotten the the money from FEMA for for whatever reason, and I don't know if Corey, Corey would have any information or not, but they have said that they have some delays in their disbursements of of the funds that we should be getting. I don't know, it's got something to do with the federal government. But we, as far as we know, we should be getting those funds, though, that's what we've been told. Oh, I'm sorry, the the amount we're getting from, I believe it was.
The reimbursement?
Yeah.
It'd be eighty five percent.
About eighty three. Right, so it was somewhere around in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand, it might have been four hundred sixty is coming to mind or something like that. Oh, five eighty three, I'm sorry. So out of the whole, you know, project, we're getting basically eighty five percent reimbursement on the construction.
But that was Brandon Pond. Just when you're looking at about fifty, is that what you said?
Well, that was, that was kind of an approximation because they haven't given us a number yet. But we should be getting reimbursed for the cost to put it back the way that it was, which is well over fifty percent of the cost of this project. So that's why I say that, it's probably more in the in the in the range of seventy five percent.
Do we have any other discussion on this issue? If not, I'm going to call for a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Got a unanimous decision. Moving right along, glad Brad stayed right there. Motion to approve a change order in the amount of two hundred ninety two thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars and twenty five cents with Sykes Brothers Incorporated for adding the paving of McFatter's Lane as well as additional paving and drainage pipe for driveways on Two Chop Road that were not in the original project design as part of the Two Chop Road paving project funded by T-Sploß.
Mr. Chairman, so when we received the construction bid for the Two Chop Road project, it came in at about three point four million and we had four point five million budgeted for the project. So we had a couple of issues that came up that we think we could address with the funds that we had left over in the budget. McFatter's Lane is a county maintained dirt road that is about a quarter mile long, probably in about the middle of this project that we're doing on Two Chop Road, it's about at the halfway point roughly. There are eight residences on the road and a paint and body shop. So the road slopes down away from Two Chop Road and we have had, over the years, I've been on the on the road with Public Works Department to address washouts that occur on it because it has a pretty good downhill slope coming off of Two Chop Road. And so water from Two Chop Road goes down McFatter's Lane and then occasionally will will cut across it in places and wash out the road. So since we have very good prices on the construction on Two Chop, we felt it would be a good opportunity to try to pave that little portion of of McFatter's Lane. The contractor has said he would be willing to extend contract unit prices to do that for the asphalt, graded aggregate base and the pipe. They have to do a little bit of grading and a little bit of clearing and go along with it. There wouldn't be any additional design costs. Staff has done some preliminary design on it internally and we don't feel like we would have any outside cost as far as that goes. So the the total cost for for paving McFatter's Lane would be about a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. The other elements in this change order are, we had a lot of the property owners on Two Chop Road come to us requesting driveways in places that we didn't pick it up on the survey and in the plans. Some of these places did not have driveway pipe there before the project began, so we didn't pick it up. A lot of them are agricultural in nature. The ditches in some places were not very deep, so they they were accessing the property through the ditch. And but when we do the construction on this project, the ditches will be much deeper and you would need pipe in place there to get across into the property. So we had about nine, let me see, yeah, nine driveways that we were adding. So, we had about nine, let me see, yeah, nine driveways that we were adding based on that. We also, and so, I think the cost of adding those driveways was about $68,000 total. Also included in the change order, we have the proposal to pave all of the driveways to the right-of-way line, similar to what GDOT does on their projects. In the past, we've typically put like a 2-foot apron going into the driveway. A lot of times, if it's a steep driveway, you end up with a pretty good drop-off coming in and out of the property. And we felt like it would be best, since we do have that in a few places, to go ahead and make it consistent throughout the project, and usually, your residents are a little happier if you do it that way, if you're consistent with it. But it also helps us in terms of having less wear and tear where the vehicles are coming in and out of the driveways. It doesn't affect the road as much. If you're going to have a problem, it's going to be off the road, which it helps us from a maintenance standpoint, we feel. So, I think that all of these items are beneficial to the county in several ways, and will enhance the project, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I know the budget was, I mean, I know the overall project was under budget, and that's what we're using that money from, but I also know that we're doing a lot of additional cost down on the father, down on the end of this business list. Do we still feel like we have plenty of money to do that additional add-on, along with the right-of-way company that we're using and all that stuff? We're good there? Okay. That was my main concern.
Right. Yeah, and I think the good thing on this part is, since the bid came in a lot lower than we expected, it allows us to not have to dip into any other projects that are planned or in progress right now, for the time being, so that's good.
Do we have any other discussion on this issue?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Unanimous decision. We got that.
Number four, consideration of a motion to approve application to GDOT for available local road assistance funding in the amount of $2,247,332.40 to be used for design and construction of the replacement of the Cypress Lake Road at Dry Branch Bridge.
Thank you again. So, similar to last year, the state has made some additional maintenance funds available to the cities and counties. Last year, we got about 2.2 million, and it's basically coming out of the LMIG program, but it's a kind of supplemental LMIG is what it is. So, they, the state uses the same formula that they use for LMIG, which is, takes your county population and your county road mileage, and that goes into a formula that determines each city and county's allotment coming out of this pot of money, basically, I guess. So, we were not expecting to get this money. It was not something we knew was coming. So, as, we felt like it would be a good use of these funds to put towards also an issue that we did not expect, which was the bridge at Cypress Lake Road and Dry Branch, which is closed right now due to the damages that it has. So, we think this would be the best way to utilize these funds and not affect the rest of the budget. And basically, we don't have to provide any matching funds for this either, so it's money that we just apply for and would receive as long as we follow all of GDOT's rules on getting those funds. And this is an eligible use for the money as well, so, but let me know if you have any questions.
Do we think the bridge is going to be able to be built for that 2.2, or do we think it's going to be more than that? Or, I know we hadn't designed it yet, and I know that's kind of an open-ended question, but...
Right now, with our preliminary, very rough estimate, we think that it would be less than that amount. So, if there is some funds left over in that, those funds could go towards another project that the board chooses, so.
The original load limit was 8,016,000?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
What we're looking at now, you don't know. It's got to be engineer firms got to...
We would, it would not be a restricted bridge. In other words, so there wouldn't be any weight restrictions on it, is what would be the proposed new bridge, anyway.
And that'll match the other bridges along Cypress Lake Road as well, correct?
That's correct. There's one that, you know, was done maybe about 10 years ago that's probably not more than a mile away from this bridge, and it would probably be similar to that in a lot of ways.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor? Next up, a motion to approve a contract with Heath &amp; Lineback BBC in the amount of $378,300 to perform engineering and design services for the Cypress Lake Road at Dry Branch Bridge Replacement Project to be funded by local assistance or local road assistance funds administered by GDOT.
And so, this goes kind of hand-in-hand with the last item, but as you all know, the bridge was damaged in late February by the wreck that occurred on it, and based on the assessment that was done, we were going to have to hire a structural engineer to design some repairs or replace the bridge, one of the two. And even if we did repair the bridge, it would still have weight capacity limitations on it that we were just discussing a while ago. So, the proposed new bridge would have no weight restrictions on it. It would be, would have two 12-foot lanes, would have 6.5-foot shoulders on each side, barrier walls, guardrail. And I think it would be much more well-suited for the traffic that goes through that area. We negotiated with Heath &amp; Lineback. Heath &amp; Lineback had reached out to the county a few times in the past concerning bridge maintenance work that they do, as well as bridge design. So, they were already kind of familiar with us, familiar with the area. They've done some other projects in rural counties for similar-type situations on bridge The scope of the contract would include surveying, hydraulic study, geotechnical investigation, design plans, and all the reports that have to go with the environmental permitting that would have to take place. So, we do, I think as I said before at the March 18th meeting when we brought it up initially, we do think it is a two-year process. There is some unknown in the part of the environmental permitting. That does take a little bit of time, but, you know, it is probably about a two-year process total to get us to where we're, you know, in construction and getting close to having that bridge open again, so. But if you have any questions, please let me know.
Brad, if you would, can you explain why you don't have to bid this out?
Yes, sir. So, by our county purchasing policy, this would be considered a professional service, and that would be anything that requires like a state license such as engineering Construction falls under a different set of rules, so that would require sealed bids, obviously, but when you have professional services, we typically do put out RFQs or RFPs to have some competition and go through a selection process, pick who we score based on who would be the best to do the job. But we felt that Heath &amp; Lineback was qualified, and by the county purchasing policy, we didn't have to go through a RFQ process, and this would speed up the process a good bit in terms of getting it under design instead of going through a two- to three-month procurement process while the bridge is closed. So, that was the thinking that we went through.
And then, will you just explain to why it's going to take two years to replace the bridge?
Yes, sir. So, the design process includes several things, such as the geotechnical part would include they're going to have to do borings down in the creek to determine, you know, how deep pile is going to have to be driven. We go through the design process following, you know, your typical GDOT standards, because the bridge would be inspected. Once it's said and done, the bridge is going to be inspected by GDOT. And then, we're going to have reports that are going to have to go to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, because we are in a wetland area where obviously, it's a bridge and it's over a creek, so there's going to be reports that have to go to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to be approved. And so, it's basically just the whole design process, and then, once you get, we get the, we get all our environmental permitting done, we get our design done, we would put it out to bid, and that would be a sealed bid process. And then, the construction is part of that timeline as well. We don't have an exact timeline on the construction. I think we'll have a better, you know, there'll be a better idea on that once the design is done and we determine some of the details on that, but, you know, I think most of the bridge replacement projects that the county has had over the last few years were probably six-to-nine-month projects. Most of them had a nine-month contract. We had some that were done a little quicker than that, like in the six-month range, but that's for the construction, because you're going to have to tear out the old bridge, build a new bridge, and that's usually about the length of time it takes, so.
But really, to summarize all that, we had an old bridge that was there that had an 8-ton weight limit to it. They've got to go in now, and they've got to get somebody to actually look at the dirt to make sure that they can, that's in the creek, to figure out what it's going to take to make that bridge to where it doesn't have a weight limit to it, correct?
Correct. And we don't have any data on that, like any kind of information from when that bridge was built 50 years ago, so we don't know what's down there exactly underneath the water. So, there's some investigation that has to be done to determine all that, because all the pile has to be driven to a depth where there's going to have the bearing support to support the loads for the traffic and everything, so.
Do we have any other questions or discussion on this issue? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Got a unanimous decision. Let's see. Number six, motion to approve task order FY25ROW-E01 with JMT in the amount of $54,600 to perform right-of-way acquisition services on the Hightower Road and Josh Smith Road paving projects.
And I think when we got the master services agreement approved at the April 1st meeting, this was a, this project we brought up is the one that we intended to get the right-of-way wrapped up on first among our dirt road projects that are in progress. Hightower Road, we got a petition on it a few years back. Been working on the right-of-way, designing the right-of-way for a while. There are nine parcels on Hightower Road where the property owners will not donate the right-of-way, and then five on Josh Smith. And so, we have the preliminary design is complete. We just need to finish getting the right-of-way, and we can move Hightower Road towards construction. So, the scope of the task order, this particular task order, would include the negotiations and the closing packages and the attorney closing that would need to be done just to wrap up that right-of-way. And that's pretty much it, but let me know if you have any questions.
Has the engineering services already been done on these roads, so they're ready to build as soon as we get the right-of-ways done?
Yes, sir. That's correct. The only thing we'll need to do is adjust anything that changes during the final right-of-way acquisition, like if a property line moves slightly or something like that, but it'll just be going back and making sure nothing has changed significantly, we'll be ready to move into construction.
Is this coming out of T-Sploost?
Yes, and I didn't mention that, but that would be coming out of T-Sploost funding that we have for those, for that project, yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Got a unanimous decision. Mr. Russian phoned it in from the back of the room there. All right, last one for Brad Deal here. Motion to approve a contract with McLendon Enterprises Incorporated for construction of concrete headwalls on DeKalb Road in the amount of $119,944.55 to be funded by T-Sploost.
Thank you, sir. So, this is another road that got damaged during Tropical Storm Debbie, and also during the storm we had on November 7th of last year. I think it got washed out during both storms. Our Public Works Department has gone in and installed five new runs of 60-inch pipe at this location. It's next to a, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with it, but it's next to a pond. During the November 7th storm, the pond dam was damaged, and, but it also washed out during Debbie as well, but we've got new pipe in place, and so, the scope of this work would include some grading work, and then, of course, the construction of steel-reinforced concrete headwalls, wing walls, and aprons around both ends of the pipe. And so, our idea here is that this is going to lock that pipe in place and protect the pipe and the road, and I believe Public Works has kind of done some work around it to where, you know, if we do get some flooding there and water's coming over the road, you know, we may have some damage further up the road where we just have to repair, replace dirt and that kind of thing, instead of having to replace all of this 60-inch pipe that we put in. And so, it is something we want to get done rather soon, since the pipe is in place, and we want to go ahead and get the headwalls in to protect the pipe. So, we have reached out to contractors for about a week trying to get quotes and did not get any quotes initially. We put a pretty tight timeline on it, and that may have been part of it, but Ron Nelson, Assistant County Engineer, kept calling, reaching out to contractors, and was able to get three quotes last week, and so, that's what we have. I think we've got the three quotes attached in the package, but the low quote was from McLendon Enterprises, which also so happened to have done the Brandon Pond Road project last year, so we have some experience with them. And they met all the requirements that we had in the quote that we put out. And as you all know, there's a good bit of agricultural traffic that uses this road, so when it's closed, it does cause an inconvenience for the folks that live in that area, but if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions or discussion on this issue? If not, I'll call for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor? Got a unanimous decision. All right. Next up, got EMA Director, Mr. Cory Kemp, who's going to come up and talk about temporary tax relief pursuant of OCGA 48-5-33, and this is for discussion only. Looks like he's bringing some backup with him as well.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'm going to do a brief introduction...
Oh, okay.
...before Mr. Kemp. I say brief, I got two and a half pages here, but I'll get through it as quickly as I can. House Bill 311, in the 2023 session of the General Assembly, enacted Section 48-5-33 of the Georgia Code, or what we commonly refer to as OCGA 48-5-33, in order to provide an option to offer some temporary ad valorem tax relief to property owners who suffer major damage or destruction of a building due to a disaster that has been declared a federal disaster area under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. And in 2024, Bullock County was included in a federally-declared disaster area for both Tropical Storm Debbie and Hurricane Helene, which is why we're discussing this issue today. The statute has two mandatory requirements when a county or any portion of a county is located in a federally-declared disaster area. First, it requires the Local Emergency Management Director, i.e. Mr. Kemp, to identify buildings in the disaster area that have incurred a degree of damage sufficient to qualify as major... major damage or as destroyed as a result of the disaster and to provide a report of those buildings to the tax commissioner. Secondly, it requires the tax commissioner to use the damage report and determine the proper parcel numbers and provide aggregated data of all eligible tax parcels to each affected governing authority whose jurisdiction wholly or partially contains the associated disaster area. So obviously, she would provide that to the county, the Board of Commissioners. Your jurisdiction extends over the whole county. Also, the Board of Education is included in that, and the municipalities would be included if any of the properties are located within their jurisdiction. The relevant governing authorities are then authorized, but not required, and this is where it becomes discretionary, to adopt a resolution consenting to provide temporary tax relief in accordance with the statute for the taxable year in which the disaster occurred. So this would be tax relief related to 2024 taxes. And there are several options set forth in the statute. The tax relief can include both eligible damaged parcels and eligible destroyed parcels, or it can just include destroyed tax parcels and exclude damaged tax parcels. The tax relief can be accomplished by one of two methods, a reduction in the millage rate or a flat dollar amount. And if eligible damaged tax parcels are included, a single millage rate reduction amount or flat dollar amount can be applied to all eligible tax parcels, or a different millage rate reduction amount and a different flat dollar amount can be applied to eligible destroyed tax parcels and eligible damaged tax parcels. So you can provide a different amount of relief to destroyed versus damaged. Now, I would suggest that if you want to provide any temporary tax relief, and again, it's optional, a millage rate reduction would probably be better for, a better option for a couple of reasons. First, if you used a flat dollar amount, you would have to make sure that the dollar amount did not exceed the lowest amount of ad valorem taxes out of all the eligible parcels, because you obviously can't provide tax relief in an amount greater than the taxes owed. In other words, if you reviewed all the eligible parcels and found that one parcel paid $1,000 in property taxes, but all the other parcels paid more than that, then tax relief in the form of a dollar amount cannot exceed $1,000, because you could not provide the lowest parcel with tax relief in an amount greater than the taxes that were paid. And there's no provision in the statute for setting different flat amounts based on how much taxes were paid, which leads me to the second reason why a millage rate reduction would probably be preferable, and that is because with a millage rate reduction, different property owners would receive different amounts of tax relief based on the value of their property, which would result in those who paid more in property taxes receiving proportionally greater relief. One final point, and Mr. Kemp may touch on this as well, but one final point to make you aware of involves manufactured homes or mobile homes. The statute does not use the term manufactured home or mobile home when it talks about major damage or destruction. It only uses the term building. However, Mr. Kemp included manufactured homes and mobile homes in his assessment because they are eligible for disaster relief under FEMA regulations and guidelines, and those are the regulations and guidelines that he's using. But, and here's the wrinkle in this, the temporary tax relief under the Georgia statute is limited to eligible tax parcels, which are real property. And the problem is that some manufactured or mobile homes are considered part of the real property if they're homesteaded or if they file what's called a T-234 in order to mortgage the home along with the real property. But absent those two circumstances, a manufactured or mobile home is considered personal property and is not taxed along with the real property tax parcel in which it is located. So if you choose to provide some form of temporary tax relief, some of the damaged or destroyed manufactured or mobile homes will receive it and some won't. And that may not seem fair, but there's really no way around it since the statute ties the temporary tax relief to eligible tax parcels. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kemp unless anybody has any questions about what I just said. May want to save questions till the end anyway, but.
Thank you. Corey Kemp, Director of Emergency Management. Just a presentation sheet. Real quick, for, up on the screen is the guidance that I use to evaluate close to 400 homes. For anything that was flooded, I use the top piece that said flooding, and for anything that was destroyed by Hurricane Helene, I use the bottom section that says wind. So out of the four some homes that we looked at, maybe 80 classified as either major or destroyed. And out of those, I think only probably 60 of them was considered real property according to the definition that Mr. Akins just read out to us. And for anything that flooded, it had to be within eight, I can't see that far, but four feet of water at, if you, hey, can we go to the sheet two, please? The second sheet with all the lines on it. No, the other sheet, I'm sorry. Number, which you wrote down, correct? Go to the next one. Where it says tax break? The other one. The other one, sorry.
You got the one?
Yes. The one, all the lines on it. Correct, thank you. So if you look at this one, scroll down a little bit, you can see where it was documented on, like, if you go to one of the houses, you will see that there had 24 inches of water in it for a couple of days. So that's how we documented all the homes. That's the sheet that we created to document who gets the tax break or millage rate reduction if that's what y'all choose to do. So that's how we kept our homes straight. There is a couple of mobile homes that are listed on there that are not technically bonded, but according to Mr. Jeff, I can make the rules according to how the bill is written. So I thought about that as well. If we vote on this, I would like y'all permission to talk about that or have a discussion about that. At the end of the day, their mobile home did get destroyed even though they don't own the land. So that is another discussion that we'd like to have. But, Ms. Akins, I'll let you discuss how we came up with the millage rates.
Okay. Thank y'all for having us. We'll be quick because we're at the end of this agenda. Looking at the spreadsheet you're looking at there, I coded in blue the ones that we do believe do not qualify for the exemption based on being proven on all the homes. The red unfortunately is property owners who have not paid their taxes, so you can't really get a refund on something you haven't paid yet, but we can cross that bridge when we get there, too. Can we put up the pictures of the two houses? We tried to simplify this. I ran this by my husband last night, and he did not understand any of what I was talking about and just wanted me to stop talking about it, so maybe we can make it a little easier for y'all. So if you look at two houses, there's two houses on this, he'll show you the second one in a minute, but if you look at two homes and hypothetically say that they have the same 40% assessed value, the top home Corey has gone and identified as having major damage. So looking at a two-mill reduction, they would essentially be getting $145.12 back in taxes. Looking at the destroyed with the four-mill reduction, they would be getting $290.24. And the way we came up with the two and four mills, because that's, that might seem like we just threw a dart and threw a number out there, but we kind of thought, okay, the first storm happened in August, right? Second storm in October. So for the purpose of this, everybody's homes were intact pretty much through August. So if you look at, if you break down a year into 12 months and take the county millage rate of 11.35, just round it to 12, I know that's a lot, but you can basically say you're paying a mill a month to the county. So if you look at this, if you refund anything more than a four-mill, you're going into the time when their home was okay. And so that was just what we thought, to be conservative, to not cause budget problems or any of the things that this could potentially cause, because I do think that, too, whatever we decide here is going to set a precedent of how we do this in the future, because if we do this now, we'll be doing this every year going forward, right, Jeff? I mean, it's.
Well, it depends on if we have a federally declared disaster.
Right, right. Anytime we have a federally.
I hope it won't be every year, myself.
I do, too, for sure, for sure. And we were all hit hard last year, but that's where the two-mill and four-mill reduction came from. There's, we just thought that that was the better way per the code section and the way it's written, because if you go into a flat dollar amount, you could potentially, they would have to be very low because you could essentially be giving someone more than they paid or more than what that prorated amount would be. We can certainly, I know this is going to be an ongoing discussion, and I'm happy to help in any way, different calculations, flat rates, anything that y'all want to look at. I know it's a lot to digest, and law is, is pretty vague in a lot of areas and gives control to the counties, you know, how they want to do it. I've asked around some other counties, like in the tax commissioner world, and so far none have come back and said that they are doing anything. I think there's just a lot of uncertainty about it and people don't really know how to proceed. So we might be setting a precedent here for, that other counties are going to look at as well. But that's just, we just kind of, that was the best way we could explain how that reduction would work for the average homeowner.
Can I ask a question, Leslie? You know, I was reading the statute again last night, and I think the ones that have not paid their taxes would be entitled to a credit.
Right.
So is that going to create an issue for you? In other words, the ones that have paid will get a refund. The ones that have not paid, it's kind of, I hate to reward somebody who hasn't paid their taxes, but they would be entitled to a credit, I think.
We could figure it out somehow with our software company or something, have them put something in specific for this. Any questions? I know it's a lot of just stuff.
We're not expecting y'all to make a decision today. This is, in fact, on the agenda, it says discussion only. This is more for information so you can think about it. And ultimately, if you want to do anything, you'll need to direct me to draft a resolution to put into place what it is you want to do. And that's when you'll take the formal action to grant whatever temporary tax relief you choose to do, if you choose to do it.
I think the only timeline that we really talked about was if we were going to do this, trying to get these refunds out in this fiscal year rather than in the next fiscal year. So that would make us happy, so.
What is the total amount of refunds that y'all are looking at, that y'all have calculated so far?
So I did, I did do a spreadsheet. Let me look. It is, it's not a lot. No, it's this one because you added those other parcels on here. It is, and I'm not going to say this is exact because I was plugging in, you know, all these values, less exemptions, and I would want to go back through every one of these and make sure it was right. But what I came up with initially was $6,940.69. You're not talking about a lot of money, and that would be across, excluding the pre-built mobile homes that we don't think qualified, that would essentially be for 36 taxpayers. And the refunds, I mean, some of the refunds are so small because on the spreadsheet, I plugged in the 40% value minus those exemptions and then what the reduction would be. I mean, we had some, some refunds were so, I don't want to say insignificant, but I mean, some of them were as low as 20-something dollars. I think the highest refund we had on there was 500 and something. So nobody's getting a huge amount of money back from this, but, but again, we can certainly do different calculations or whatever y'all want to do after y'all have some time to discuss it.
How many of these folks received federal and state aid from either FEMA or GEMA to repair their homes?
There was 11,000 applicants applied. Over 2,900 actually received some type of funding. There was approximately $9 million worth of funds given to Bullock County citizens for the repairs of either storm.
But we don't know specifically how many of these folks have actually received federal or state money or both?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And then, do you know how many of them have actually made repairs to their homes?
Some of them have already made repairs because I had a hard time figuring out if your home was damaged. If they did make repairs, I think they would have to go through planning and zoning to get it approved.
And then if they haven't made repairs, they could actually go and have the request to have their property reappraised at a lower value, is that correct?
They, yeah, they would be able to appeal their value with the assessor's office because those notices will be going out, I think, next month. So when they get that, they could certainly file an appeal. It's a lot. It's a lot.
Any other questions on this? Thank y'all.
You're welcome.
So next up, we've got EMA Director Corey Kemp again. Grant permission to apply for grants through GEMA to purchase generators and other initiative projects for critical facilities.
Good morning again, Corey Kemp, EMA. Shortly, I will post or put up a spreadsheet. Thank you. This spreadsheet is a couple of facilities within Bullock County, fire departments, animal shelter, public works, BCCI, 911, that do not currently have generators or, except for 911, they have a generator, but it's past its useful life. So I would like to apply for grants for all these facilities to get generators. I know the bottom price says, can't see that, yeah, 405. But with the grant, 85% of it will be paid between FEMA and GEMA. So we would be left with about $38,000 if we do receive the grant. So $38,000 for all the generators. The two at the bottom are not generators. They are weather radios and weather stations. Weather radios for the general public and weather stations are for the fire departments or the ELC. The ones that we had all got destroyed during Hurricane Helene. They just stopped working in the middle of the storm. I think one or two may have come back up, but the rest of them are not working, so we would like to replace those as well. Those will be also initiative projects going to GEMA. If we're able to get those, we do have a cost share of $770 out of the $8,000 that it cost. So here to ask permission to apply for the grants. Any questions?
Do we have any questions on this issue? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve permission to go for the grants.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Got a unanimous decision. Before we do this, we've got two other issues. I want to go through them real quick and then we'll swing back to you, okay? So first thing I want to do is circle back and get number nine on the consent agenda here, which was approve the purchase of a dome liner and pool tarp for splash in the Borough Aquatic Center from Horizon Building Systems and the amount of $112,479.
Chairman, I ask for the board to allow a brief recess?
Absolutely.
We have been here for a while.
Can I get a motion for a recess? Okay, got a second? And so, all in favor? And so, all in favor? All right, we'll take a 10-minute recess and come back at.
I'm just gonna give you the rundown of like from the beginning to now. Um, and you can stop me anytime in between or just wait for questions afterwards. Um, in 2019, the dome was decided to be replaced. Um, at that time, due to budget restraints, um, they didn't replace what we call the pool tarp, the floor. Um, this thing weighs eight thousand pounds and it has to be seen together with bolts. In order to get to those seams, you're over the pool. So a floor goes over the pools, gets locked in. So you're walking on it like a water bed. Um, that part was not replaced. The brand new dome was purchased, put up, um, and taken down 2020. After that, it was the sketchiness for a couple of years of the pandemic where we are closed facility. Um, if it came back, we would have shut down. If we left it open air, we'd be like a baseball game, soccer game, and we could stay open. Um, we left it to the customers to vote in their safety. Um, and they always voted crazily to like thirty to yes, to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and ninety. Said, no, don't know dome. They felt safer without it. That was the pandemic time. Um, we got to the time of now, um, November, where they were like, yeah, we feel comfortable enough with the way of the world and how it's going. And everybody's just being knowledgeable of safety to put it back up. We left up to the customers vote. Um, we had left a voting chart up there for a month. They all voted. Um, we've kept track of that. Um, when we had put the dome away, um, and put it back up this year, we noticed it had mildew on it. Um, we called the manufacturer and said, well, the only way you can get mildew on it is if it was wet. We said, yes, well, when you walk on this flooring that you're supposed to work on, it was not replaced. It has pinholes in it. And so as you're walking on it, fifty grown men pulling on it, the water seeps back through it, um, causing the dome to be rolled up and stored in a shed for nine months, whatever. Um, wet, causing it to mildew. Um, the dome, to give you an example, from 2024 to 2025 now, just to give you some numbers of January, um, the cold months, January, February, we'll just stick with that instead of the whole area. Um, from the actual person who buys the pass scans, that means they can come and go as they please, two hundred and sixty-nine people a month in 2024 with no dome versus five hundred and seventy-five with a dome. Um, thirty visit pass, other people who buy passes a year, eighty-seven with no dome, one hundred and eighty-nine with a dome. February, the next cold month, three ninety-seven, an annual pass versus seven hundred and eight with a dome who came to visit us. It counts them every time we come in, we keep record of that. So we've doubled, if not more doubled, all our numbers. Um, the thirty visit pass from one seventeen to two hundred and thirty people coming to visit with the dome. So the pandemic idea is gone. So now it's the comfort of being in a seventy-six degree air and being able to exercise even though it's forty or thirty-five degrees outside. Um, so the numbers are there. We've doubled, if not more, um, our visits and basically the public service that we provide to the county of being able to exercise and swim. Um, any questions for me?
I was the one that moved that and I had questions and y'all answered all my questions yesterday. And I, the main thing I wanted to move it so people could see that there is an increase of attendance with the dome. And it's not, you know, I didn't want to spend the money if we were decreasing with the dome or if it was level. But the, the people of the Bullet County are coming out because of the dome, dome is there. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that it is a huge increase.
If you don't mind me adding, we, if you guys remember the playground we got, um, we purchased for the middle of Splash, the bucket land, right? It was allocated eight hundred thousand dollars. The man in his good graces bought metal cheaper and instead of keeping his mouth shut, said, hey, I bought the metal cheaper. I'm gonna pass those savings along to you. This is not quote unquote new money. This is what we had left over from a previous project. Um, the playground came out a hundred and twenty thousand dollars cheaper than anticipated. Um, so we're just trying to shift this money over to replacing something that's just aesthetically ugly and a floor that we do need.
And, and I ask you now to be clarified, a, a lot of that is senior citizens that go out there and exercise and all.
Yes, sir. Um, you talking about people with just disabilities, move around, their joints are locked up. They can't go jogging, they can't go to a gym. They, um, and the water aerobics, um, the therapy classes we hold, hold in ninety-degree water. Um, if we're closed for one day, like we closed for Thanksgiving and Christmas, and they get mad. Um, they want to be there. Um, they feel their bodies locking up, the days they can't come swim. And the people that come swim are, if not every day, at least three, four times a week, um, they come and use this. Any questions? Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Any further discussion on this issue? Do I have a motion? Move to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Correct.
All in favor? Got an unanimous decision? Okay. I believe that leads us to employee health insurance issue.
Good morning, everyone. Um, so I handed out a page that, uh, shows proposed health insurance rates for employees for next, next fiscal year. Um, in our budget workshop a couple of weeks ago, we talked about health insurance and the increasing cost associated with claims. Um, the county has not increased the employee premiums on our health insurance in a very long time. I'm not even sure when the last time that was changed. Um, the last couple of years, I know that we made decisions not to increase employee claims because of other things that were changing. We changed vendors and, um, last year. So even though we knew that it was coming, that we needed to adjust the employee premiums, we decided not to do that on top of the other changes last year. So this year, we are proposing that the employee premiums increase by ten percent. Um, if you look at this page, it has the proposed rates for twenty twenty-six and then the current rates. And then at the bottom, there's an increase, shows the increase in the biweekly deduction. It is very, it's pretty small. Um, the county has a very strong health insurance benefit to employees. And so this is not going to be a huge cost to the employees, but it will help, um, offset some of the additional cost of claims to, um, bolster the health insurance fund. Um, so if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I know we're gonna be that short that we've been talking about, was it like three and a half million? Where does, doing this ten percent, where does that get us? I know it's not gonna get us anywhere near it, but I mean, where are we looking at with this ten percent?
This is probably gonna be two hundred, two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand maybe additional for the year.
Any other discussion on this issue? Any other questions?
This comes as your recommendation?
Yes.
All right, if we don't have any other questions or discussions, I'm gonna call for a motion.
Please move, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Say.
All in favor? We got three, four, all opposed, one against. Motion passes. Only Toby. Okay, that brings us to number ten, which is Mr. Corey Kemp, FEMA Acquisition Program Presentation, Acquiring Storm-Damaged Homes Through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
Good morning again, Corey Kemp, EMA. Um, I'll be quick. Go ahead to the first slide. All right. So FEMA's Acquisition Program, so it's an acquisition program through the Robert T. Stafford Act. It's ran through FEMA where the state of Georgia or GEMA is the applicant. Bullet County would be the sub-applicant for these grants. So, um, if this is to take care of any flood-prone home, home or home, any home that flooded during Debbie or Helene, or any home that is in a special flood hazard area, essentially FEMA will buy that house out from them. Go to the next one. So for the project, what it must have, it must solve a problem. So the problem is solving is taking it out of a floodplain, it is getting rid of the home. Um, must be, have benefits to the area, which will be no more flood issues for Bullet County in that particular area. Must be cost-effective, which we will talk about later. And sustain and reduce future risks, which would be no more flooding to that area again. Um, environment, the project must be environmentally sound. So all we, all we would do is tear down the home, remove the payment, uh, cap the septic or pull it out the ground or, and cap the power lines. Um, yes. So the application process, and I'm going through this pretty quick because there's one slide that we're gonna take the most time on. So the application process is funding available, yes. Currently, GEMA has about four hundred and seventeen million dollars to spend on hazard mitigation projects. We do, I did go, went ahead and sent a notice of intent just to hold the position in line. Um, application development, there has been no applications that have been done at this time, but seven people have contacted me and there is a neighborhood that I will make contact with to see if they're interested again. Once that is a complete, we will give it to the state for them to review, then FEMA will review it as well, and then award in implementation of the project. That's essentially, they award it, then we tear down the houses and the family moves on. Good. So in the cost estimate, all these things are included, where we have to look at the demo price, the remove, the removal of the debris, asbestos tested fees for, um, transfer and search of transfer, of title search and transfer. Um, site, site restoration is a, it could be a fee, it could not be a fee. It just depends what we want to do with the land afterwards. And then the project management fee, and that project management fee could either be done by, it could be done by me or we can hire someone as a project manager, because FEMA will reimburse that as well. And one thing I must say, all these projects are reimbursable projects. So yes, we have to pay upfront, but we will get reimbursed. And once again, all this is strictly voluntarily. So can't make anybody do this, it's if they want to, they can back out at any time. Go to the next one. Now, this is the main slide that I wanted to speak about. If we're just gonna use the top line, that's one, two, three, North Main Street. We're just gonna assume that they have a house value or fair market value of two hundred thousand. So out of that two hundred thousand, we have to add the appraisal costs, the closing costs, the testing, demolition, property clearance. So you get a total amount of two hundred and twenty-seven, five hundred. Of that two twenty-seven, five hundred, yes, we would, Bullet County have to pay it upfront. But you'll see, we'll, we will get reimbursed, reimbursed eighty-five percent. So there's that thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars that's left over, that fifteen percent. Well, we have an option. We, the county, can pay that for them, or they can take a fifteen percent reduction on the check that they would receive. So that's where the second group comes in, where you see the two hundred thousand dollar check that they would receive. You will see there's that one thirty-four, one twenty-five where it's taken away from that money, and then they will receive a check for one sixty-five. So that would be option number two. They, if they want to get out of their home, that continues to flood, they pay their own fifteen percent to get out of their home. Now, out of that one sixty-five that's left up there, yes, they would have to pay off their current mortgage or lien on their home. So if they owe a hundred and fifty, yes, a hundred and, a hundred and fifty will come out of that one sixty-five. So yes, they would be left with a check of fifteen thousand dollars to walk away to go find a brand-new home. Any questions about that main slide? No? No? Everybody's, okay. So that is the main point I wanted to make, that I, personally, I would, I would pay the fifteen percent, but there's an option. County can pay it, or we can tell a homeowner to pay it. No, go to the next slide now. So demonstrating cost, cost effectiveness. Well, there's three ways we can just, um, figure out if the home is cost-effective. One, if their home is located in a special flood hazard area and is valued at less than three twenty-three, it's automatically approved as cost-effective. Number two is there is a substantial damage waiver and they live close to a riverine. So these would be the houses that's closer to the Gichi River. But I don't believe we have any that has been declared substantially damaged. If so, I don't know about them. Um, and last is the, uh, FEMA's Benefit Cost Analysis VCA Toolkit. I'm very familiar, I've done a hundred of them, do them in my sleep. I don't believe any of them would need that. Well, I think just one of the houses would need that tool, ran on them. The rest of them would all fall, fall in category one of there being less than three twenty-three market value. And the market value is pre-storm value, not the current value. So I would look on the twenty twenty-three fair market value to see what their home was valued at, at that time. So the blue area I keep talking about, or the special flood hazard, that's what, what you see up there on the map. If you pull up a regular flood map, or if you pull up Bullet County Q Public website, and there's a legend on the side, if you click flood map, it'll highlight everything in blue that's in a floodplain. So those are the homes that will get automatic benefits. They will be automatically cost beneficial and they will be recognized as the three twenty-three going in, unless their house is valued at more than that amount. And yes, so last slide, open space. When it's finished, yes, it will become open space. That means the land has to go back to its natural habitat. We can choose to cut the grass if we want, or we can just let it grow back to woods. It's whatever we choose. Or the neighborhood want, neighborhood can build a garden, they can build a park, they can build a basketball court there. They just can't have anything that restricts water. But the land can never be sowed again. It would be on its deed that this was FEMA bought land, now owned by Bullet County, but nothing can never, nothing can ever be constructed on the land going forward. But there, I've seen basketball courts, gardens, stuff like that in Savannah where we did a bunch of them. And I think that's the last slide, right? Yeah. Last slide. Quick, so questions? I know that was a lot thrown into you in five minutes. What you got? Go ahead.
What's the turnaround time as far as getting reimbursed?
For total turnaround, if you, if we submit one today and FEMA accepted, it'll be about nine months. If, if we put it through Swift Current, it's nine months to get it from award to torn down. From reimbursement, if we reimburse them today, it'll be sixty days. If we waited till the project is completely finished, it will still be sixty days. And that's, that's looking at it in a, we're being very pessimistic, pessimist about it, sixty days.
You say it's got to stay green spaces. We can't, county can't retain this land for any future projects.
No. Um, the biggest project you can possibly put on it is a retention or detention pond to help the rest of the neighborhood or area. But no dams.
Yep.
So a park, a garden, uh, there's a couple of neighborhoods in Savannah that did neighborhood gardens, where the community is planting gardens to soak up some of the water. Um, there is a couple that did a small detention pond or retention pond to just help with the water going there. But no, as far as building something on it, no. Even a fence has to be a certain type of fence where it cannot construct any water or constrain any water going in and out.
Mr. Chairman, who is the owner of the warranty deed once this process goes through?
The warranty deed would stay with Bullet County. Correct.
But it'll be subject to federal regulations that went along with this, this process.
Yes, it, because it ultimately it was bought under a federal FEMA project or FEMA thing. But yes, it will come back to Bullet County. Once it's FEMA's approved, it, it will come back to Bullet County, but we will have the warranty deed. But anything we want to do to the property, we would still have to ask the state for permission. So if we wanted to do the garden, when we submit the acquisition project to FEMA, we would go ahead and put the open space project in the back of it, so it can all be submitted as one project. So we don't have to ask multiple times. And I, I haven't mentioned currently, I have seven interest, interested parties that wanted to talk about this.
What are you asking us for today?
Permission to actually go forward and apply for the grants if the homeowner still voluntarily wants to do it.
And this isn't something that, that will be used as a tool to force somebody out of their house that doesn't want to leave, correct?
They have to sign a voluntary release form before the project is submitted to GEMA during the application period and at the final award, um, sit-down, they have to sign another voluntary release to send, we're not forcing them to do this, they're doing this out of their own free will. And like I said, at any point, they can back out, even when everything is awarded and we're all sitting at the closing table. They can change their mind and walk away. There is nothing binding them to this.
Were you be coming back individually, for them to approve individually each transaction?
Yes, sir. Because the properties I put up there are just, for an example, each property is gonna be very unique. So I will come back each time to let you know which properties and how we're going to proceed.
Do we have to figure out this whole eighty-five, fifteen percent thing right now before we apply for the grant? Or is that something that we can determine later, on who covers that fifteen percent?
We can determine it later, but I, I, I would love to say, if I wanted to sit down with Ms. Christie today, I would love to say, hey, we can go forward, but the county has agreed that you need to cover your fifteen percent or we will cover your fifteen percent. I think that is something that needs to be told upfront, that who will be covering that fifteen percent?
But you're just asking for us to give you permission to, today to proceed the grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm gonna ask for a motion at this time, then.
I guess my concern is, is this whole fif, I'm, I'm just caught up on the fifteen, because I don't want to get in there and all of a sudden the county's having to pay all this extra money. With this grant that we apply for, this is just giving y'all permission to go ahead and proceed. We don't have to, if, if a, if a homeowner decides to do this, when do we have to decide on that fifteen percent if the county's doing it or if they're doing it?
When the application is complete, I'll come back with a completed application and ask, can this be submitted? And then from there, I guess, we'll decide how this fifteen percent will work. That's.
But step one is still, we have to get approval for the grant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I make a motion, we're giving permission to proceed with, um, seeking the grant.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Unanimous decision in favor? Thank you. Okay, I believe that carries us through our new business and brings us to our commission and staff comments. Uh, do we have any comments from the staff, Mr. Butler?
Good morning, thank you. Think Butler, Bullet County Public Works. A couple of things I wanted to bring you up to speed on. Um, Public Works workforce, we're operating at about seventy percent right now, uh, counting the inmate lossage because of the employee lossage or open positions. Um, out of that, fifteen of them are in, uh, nine of them are in, um, transportation, two in solid waste, two in the airport, and two in fleet, those are open positions. We got four on long-term medical, uh, one more potential in the future, near future, and one on light duty. We're, we're limited, very limited on what we can do. So we're basically just responding to absolute needs and trying to maintain as, as much as we can in this process. Um, there's been a question about the, the mulch. Um, we should finish that hopefully by the end of the month, getting that disposed of. Uh, there's been some questions about the public having access to that. Once that is picked up by contractors, then it's the contractor's property and responsibility to dispose of. We do have some mulch that we picked up from our collection centers. Um, that mulch is intended to be left for, um, internal use for the county, the rec department to be used on county facility property, um, around trees and shrubs and things like that. Um, Deacon Road Project, as Brad mentioned earlier, um, the head wall approvals was the upgrade for that. We did not seek that upgrade in FEMA reimbursement, so that hundred thousand or so, uh, is a direct expense. Everything else we've done there up to this point would be reimbursable by FEMA. We done the temporary repairs, then we come back and done what we considered to be the permanent repairs. The head walls were in addition to that. The hundred thousand dollars would have probably been our expense anyway. Um, if we had gone through all of the mitigation process, we'd have been at approximately a million dollars recovery. Our ten percent would have been a hundred thousand dollars, so it's pretty much a wash either way. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask Corey if he would step back up. Christie, if you would step up here, please. Um, you know that we went through the process of trying to get some expedited funding for the Helene project. Um, this is a team effort, uh, all of us dealing with FEMA and trying to get this put together for as funding goes. We have received from GEMA, uh, the expedited funding check, five million, nine hundred, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cent. And I would like to present that to Christie at this time. But it was a joint effort for all of us to, to accomplish this and to get this money back. Um, this goes a long ways towards basically the thirteen million. The, and that thirteen million is being documented to be, um, a hundred percent recovery if we get it all done by the end of June, uh, through, through FEMA and GEMA's commitments. So, uh, the remainder of this money is still kind of out there for, for reimbursement, but that's kind of where we stand at right now. We have probably rough estimates, we may have close to a million dollars, uh, in-house that we claim that would, we would be able to get back also at a hundred percent. And, uh, I'm assuming that that hundred thousand or so, I mean, that million or so, was it a million? Hundred thou, million. Uh, that million would then in generally go back to the general fund, it's not passed-through money. So, any questions?
We'd like to thank y'all for the good work. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since we don't see five million dollar checks every day, can we get a photo for that?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Venus, if you will come that way just a little, and, um, if I can get Mr. Anthony over just a little bit this way. There we go. That way we see everybody, everybody. If you can see the camera, the camera can see you. And let's go.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners, Ron Nelson, Engineering Office, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't at least acknowledge Brad Deal. This is his last, uh, Commissioners meeting. Appreciate everything he's done for Bullock County. I think he's been here since around 2017, so he's running down his eighth year here, so I'd just like to acknowledge him. Blood, sweat, and tears, everything he's put into, uh, the county, uh, taking care of as much as he possibly can, roads, bridges, and all parks in between as well, all the storms, everything he's responded to. Appreciate his, I personally appreciate his leadership. Last 18 months I've been here, it's gonna be sorely missed. Um, do wish him well, obviously in his next endeavors with the City of Statesboro. It'll be good to have some intel over at the City of Statesboro and Engineering Office, so we will be greedy and use that to our advantage as much as possible, for sure. So, Brad, thank you so much for everything you've done. Um, I know you're somebody that doesn't like a whole lot of spotlight, but at the same time, uh, it's worth the recognition just to let everybody know. So, Brad, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You took half of mine. You can come back up. Brad, if you come up also, please, so everybody can see you one more time. You didn't spend much time up here today. But anyway, Ron's already spoke to, to Brad, and, and he's been a great part of the team here, uh, has, has just done wonders. There's a lot of people out in, in the community, even staff, that really do not realize the time and effort. Uh, I found out that, uh, there's a little competition when Cindy Mallett was here, between her and Brad, as to who would be here first in the morning and who would be here last. So, Brad, I appreciate everything you did for the county, and, uh, looking forward to, he actually came to the county to learn how to do it right, now he's going back to the city, so, uh, anyway. Look forward to great things from you there. And you may or may not know, but Ron, who's hiding behind me, uh, has been appointed the interim, uh, county engineer, and we're glad to have such knowledge. He's had 30-plus years with the Georgia Department of Transportation, and is bringing that knowledge and those contacts here now to, to fill the gap. Uh, so, uh, I, I have a, a drinking buddy, a Diet Coke or whatever, uh, in the interim business now, so looking forward to that, and, uh, I know that he'll offer everything that you need as a board and, uh, leadership in that department. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Very good, thank you.
Brad, we're gonna put you on the spot one more time. Is there anything that you want to say before you, uh, leave?
I'll just say I appreciate the last seven years. I feel very blessed to work here, uh, from Bullock County, so, um, it's been a good experience. Met a lot of people, learned a lot of things, and just very thankful to everyone, and all the employees, and the cit, you know, met a lot of citizens that, um, hey, I, I grew up here, and I've met a lot of people I didn't know, and found a lot of roads that I didn't know existed. I'm surprised, we got so many, uh, 1,200 mile roads, but I just appreciate everything. Thank you.
Brad's done amazing work here over the last, uh, seven years, and I can tell you that, uh, it was always interesting to me, because since I've taken office, um, I, I tend to stay here a little bit late in the evening times, too, and, um, it's always interesting to me, because the engineers are always like the last people to leave. I think sometimes they live here, and they're just not telling anybody, they got like a little cave in the basement somewhere, but, uh, I appreciate everything you do. And, um, you know, you've been an amazing help to, to me personally, and trying to make me smart and bring me up to speed with a lot of the, the engineering things that happen here in the county, and, um, you will be missed.
Any other staff com-
Any other staff comments? Commissioner comments? Everybody's quiet today.
I know accolades already been mentioned to Brad. I personally would like to say thank you. Had a good working relationship with Brad, and, uh, he's helped pull the rabbit out of some hats and, uh, helped bring some projects to fruition, and, uh, not that he was doing anything outside of the job, but he put in a lot of extra effort, and that goes a long way to, uh, taking care of the citizens, and it's actually, uh, study into details and see if they can find a way to make it happen. So, Brad, thank you. And, uh, I'd just like to say to all the other, uh, employees of this great county, thank you for what you do every day. Uh, this is a great county, and, uh, I'm often reminded is, uh, go other places and see what we have versus what they have. So, thank you.
Any other commissioner or staff comments?
Well, I will say this, um, Brad always has the, had a listening ear, even though you go to, going to the city, I'm still gonna be calling you. I probably already done called you. Me and you've been talking about stuff you can do, do for me in the city, because I do have some property in the city, so we already, I already been as here about that. But I appreciate you for what you've done in the county. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments, staff comments, going once, going twice, three times? All right. So, I know it's like Survivor out there today. Everybody's kind of just, the crowd has thinned as the day's gone on, and we've run long, but, uh, we've got a lot of stuff we needed to get done today, so, um, and at this time, I must now call for a motion to adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of OCGA 50-14-21 and other applicable laws pursuant to the advice of County Attorney Jeff Akins for the purpose of discussing political, or, excuse me, potential litigation and real estate.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Thank y'all for coming out today.